Hello and welcome to Represent NYC Election Coverage. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the Democratic primary for City Council District 3, which includes Manhattan's Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, Greenwich Village, West Soho, Hudson Square and Hudson Yards, Times Square, the garment district, Flatiron, and a little bit more of Manhattan's West Side. I will soon introduce you to six Democrats competing in the primary, the vote for which will occur in June. They're joining us for today's debate. This race is part of the 2021 New York City election cycle, which is well underway and poised to be the most significant municipal election in decades. All of city government is on the ballot, and because so few incumbents are eligible to run for their current seats due to term limits, New Yorkers are electing many new office holders and the next roster of leadership for our city. There will be a new mayor of New York City elected here in 2021, as well as a new city comptroller, several new borough presidents, and many new city council members, including this representative for District 3. And that's not all that's on the ballot. A number of incumbents are eligible for and seeking reelection, including the city's public advocate. There's a very crowded and competitive race for Manhattan District Attorney and still more. Party primaries are set for June, and the general election in the fall will culminate on November 2. This is the first full set of municipal elections that will feature both an early voting period as well as the new ranked choice voting system. Now, ranked choice voting only applies to party primaries and special elections, and we have a separate show explaining ranked choice voting, so please do find that and give it a watch. But that means ranked choice voting is at play in this primary here in City Council District 3. You'll meet the candidates in just a moment. Now, this city election cycle would be of enormous importance under even more usual circumstances, but it's obviously unfolding at a time of great crisis for our city. Now, that raises the stakes for the decisions that you, the voter, will make. This next wave of city leadership will quite clearly make or break the city's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic and its many impacts on health, families, jobs, housing, education, and much, much more. New York City faced a number of crises and myriad problems even before COVID. Some of those have only worsened. So it's an important time of choosing here in New York City, and we're pleased to bring you many individual interviews with candidates for citywide and borough-wide offices, as well as this and other city council debates. We hope this and other debates and interviews will help you sort through your many choices and make informed decisions when it's time to vote. So let's get to today's debate among the candidates for City Council, a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem solving, legislating, budgeting, making land use decisions, and still more. Joining me now by Zoom are six Democratic candidates for City Council District 3: Leslie Bogosian Murphy, Eric Botcher, Phelan Dante Fitzpatrick, Marnie Halasa, Alita LaFarg, and Arthur Schwartz. Welcome. Thank you all for joining me. Briefly, before we get started, here are the rules. There are no opening statements, and for most questions, candidates will get a minute and a half to answer, followed by some follow-up questions from me, just for clarity or asking you for some more detail. It's not the start of a new minute and a half, but I might ask you for a little bit more at the end of your time. There will be one-minute closing statements at the end, and if there's time right before the closing statements, we'll do a quick lightning round of yes, no, or short-answer questions. All right, so let's get started. I'll alternate who starts each round, but we'll always go in the same order of candidates, alphabetically by last name for the sake of simplicity, and so everybody knows when their turn is going to come around. So for this first question, we're starting with Leslie, and then we'll move to Eric, Phelan, Marnie, Alita, and Arthur. All right, so for our first question, we're going to start with Leslie and move in alphabetical order by last name. I'll prompt you when it's your turn. But the first question to everybody is, what specific qualifications can you cite that prepare you to be a member of the New York City Council? And what specific things can you say you've accomplished in public service up to this point? Leslie, you have a minute and a half. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think there are three things that make me uniquely qualified for this spot. And in combination, I think it would make me a wonderful representative for District 3. The first is my life experience. I'm a resident of Hell's Kitchen for 17 years. I'm here with my husband, our eight-year-old daughter, and our dog Bailey. I'm also the proud granddaughter of immigrants. My four grandparents fled Armenian genocide, ended up here in New York City not knowing a stitch of English. And my parents were small business owners. And all this background really forms me and my core Democratic beliefs. The second thing is my work experience. I was an investigative Emmy-winning reporter, investigative reporter for over 20 years, and I learned how to tell stories of the marginalized and give voices to those who did not have one. And the third spoke in that is I've been doing community service for about 10 years now. First, I was on the board of my building, and then I worked at the local women and children's shelter. Now I'm on the Executive Committee of Community Board 4. I'm on the Hudson River Park Trust Task Force advocating for green, open spaces. And I'm also on our district's budget task force. So I think those three things combined make me uniquely qualified, and quite frankly, I think the best candidate for this position.
Thank you. Eric.
So I came to New York from a small town in the Uterundack Mountains as an LGBTQ person, and I struggled a lot there. And it was in New York City where I found myself and found community, and that's why I made the decision to dedicate myself to public service, working at the City Council as the LGBTQ liaison, fighting for housing for runaway homeless youth and people living with AIDS, fighting against hate crimes, and for LGBT curriculum in school, working for the governor as the LGBT liaison, where I helped lead the fight for marriage equality in New York State. And then as Corey Johnson, Chief of Staff, here in the district for the last six years, fighting for more funding for schools, renovating nearly every park throughout the district. And over the last year, helping to lead the community's response to COVID-19, delivering over 60,000 pantry boxes to seniors and families experiencing food insecurity, and so much more. But this June, we're going to be electing a whole new city government. Thirty-seven of the 51 council members are going to be new, and we're going to need folks at city hall with experience and knowledge about how things work to help us get our goals accomplished.
Thank you. And Phelan.
I'm a gay, single dad and a New Yorker of color. That's been a small business operator in District 3 for over 20 years. In fact, I'm one of the only candidates who has multiple businesses here in the city. I'm someone who takes great pride in my community and my neighbors and my fellow New Yorkers. And I know what it takes to run a successful business, to manage a budget, to employ a diverse group of New Yorkers and care for people. I believe in public service, and I believe that that all New Yorkers, no matter what our backgrounds are, professional experience, can apply our sense of service and commitment to the community. A lot of this is my own personal experience and history that led me to run for City Council, and some of those are really good, raising my daughter in this great city. I'm a gun violence survivor who lost my father to a hate crime when I was 19 years old and trying to be a strong business leader in a city that's been hit very hard by the pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Marnie, over to you. What specific qualifications can you say, and what specific public service accomplishments?
Okay, so I believe I'm the best candidate because I have the district's priorities straight, creating deeply affordable housing, solving the homelessness crisis, and also the crisis of small business closures, and I've been doing the work. Also, I believe I'm the best candidate because I am an ordinary person. I'm a political outsider, as a figure skating coach, lawyer, and activist, which voters want, that's what they tell me. So I can think outside the box and can push policies that lead to genuine reform. But also, I believe I'm the best candidate because I am kind and generous, and I philosophically believe we should take care of other human beings, and I will bring that sensibility to the council. But one of my accomplishments as a tenant activist is I organized public housing residence in the district at Fulton and Elliott Chelsea, worked with the tenants to stop the demolition of two public housing buildings. And were we not successful, that would have been a citywide precedent. And also, my advocacy in prior years for small businesses pushed Corey Johnson to give the Small Business Job Survival Act a public hearing. And just recently, federal Judge Pauli ruled what I've been advocating for two years, that tenant protections do not follow NICA tenants once a development converts over to RAD. So those are my accomplishments, and I feel like voters want a new kind of candidate, a regular person can think outside the box and really can push policies that lead to genuine reform.
Thank you. Everybody's doing so great with the timing so far. That's great. Alita, over to you.
Oh, I think I have a lot of experience that would prepare me for this position. I've worked as an activist since I was a teenager. I worked with NARAL, National Abortion Rights Action League, and was trained to lobby senators against unfair legislation. And going forward, I was always involved in public service and volunteerism. We had, when I was just a child, developed the Manhattan Plaza AIDS Project, where I worked alongside my mother, caring for the very sick and dying, and watched as they advocated for services to be provided for people who are otherwise being abandoned and neglected. And that really formed my entire perspective on community work and neighborhood support. Because without a strong community, the larger picture just fails. But going forward, I was, I had a child, I'm a single mother, and as soon as he entered school, I joined the board of his small co-op school. Obama told me to get a clipboard, and so I did it. That was my first election, and I became the board president of his school board. And after that, I was elected president of the Tenants Association at my building, Manhattan Plaza, where we have 3,500 residents who have elected me again five years in a row because they believe in my leadership, and I've been able to help and support our tenants here, whether it be--
Thank you. Arthur, over to you.
I'm a 40-year resident of Greenwich Village. I've been a civil rights and labor lawyer for 42 years. I'm the parent of four kids, I don't mean to call themselves kids, ages 15 to 33. I'm in a wonderful 20-year marriage. I've been the district leader, was state Democratic committee member for Greenwich Village and Soho since 1995. I spent 24 years on Community Board 2. I was chair of the Parks and Waterfront Committee for 20 of those years. I was a founder of Hudson River Park. I am an activist. I've been an activist since I was 15 years old, when I sat in in the Bronx High School of Science principal's office. What have I done? You know, first of all, I'm the quintessential outsider. I was Bernie's lawyer. I was Zephyr's lawyer and treasurer. I was Cynthia Nixon's lawyer, Jomani Williams' lawyer when they ran for office. I sued and got Pier 40 to become what it is today, which is one of the greatest athletic fields in the city. I recently, the Transit Authority cut C&amp;F service. I went to court for the Fulton Houses Tenants Association and got that service restored. They tried to pull station agents from the booths in the stations. I went to court and won that back, representing Congressman Espiaut, and won that back. I just got six elevators on 14th Street under the ADA and announced that win with Senator Schumer on the corner. I am filing suit today for tenants at NICA who do not have gas service. This is the kind of stuff I do every day, and I do it as a volunteer.
Thank you. All right, we are on to our first issue question, and this is actually a fairly open-ended question. We're going to start this round with Marnie and then go in the same order. So for this question, please, obviously, there are many issues in every city council district and every borough, but for this round, please identify two pressing issues in City Council District 3, and what specifically you would do to address them if elected to the city council. Marnie, go ahead.
So the first thing I would do if I was elected, I would reintroduce the Small Business Job Survival Act that had a hearing in 2018. Corey Johnson said he was going to tweak it and then move it to a full-floor vote. He never did. I'm still pushing. But I believe that, I mean, that's been languishing in city council for, I don't know, like 30 years. And, you know, really what it does is it gives small business owners, I'm sure everybody here knows, a long-term, affordable, renewable lease. So that's super important, that the business, once the lease ends, has the right to renew so the rent doesn't skyrocket. That happened with my business. So that is one thing I would do. The second thing I would do is stop RAD at NICA because RAD is an eviction machine. It's been reported all over the place. Ocean Bay converted to RAD. There was a 7% eviction rate compared to 1% eviction rates. Right now, we push so hard that now Senator Schumer had a press conference with Nidey Velazquez to fully fund NICA. Nidey's bill was $70 billion. Now it's $80 billion. So specifically, those two issues, introduce the SBJSA, and also just really push for the fully funding NICA and to stop RAD. You know, whatever I have to do, lawsuits, whatever I can do, social movements, protesting, but to stop RAD because it's an eviction machine.
Thank you. And for folks watching who are not familiar with some of the acronyms and other things, encourage you to Google anything that comes up. We won't be able to explain every topic or acronym that comes up, but obviously RAD is a program being implemented at some NICA complexes. Just quickly, Marnie, has the pandemic changed any of your thoughts on the Small Business Job Survival Act now that, you know, obviously, the situation around small businesses--
Yeah, hello, it's needed even more. It's needed even more so because right now, small business owners want to actually renegotiate their leases with their landlords, so it's super important to pass. But also, I think now businesses can't pay the rent, so they also need some kind of substantial rent relief, canceling the rent as well. So those two things.
All right, and some of that is coming through from the recent federal aid package. All right, Alita, over to you. Two pressing district issues and what specifically you do to tackle them.
So I think right now, public safety is on everyone's mind. Our relationship with the NYPD is on everyone's mind. It's something that I've been working with as a tenant leader here, developing relationships with our local precincts because I truly believe that we need to move into a more community policing model. I think that, yes, that the budget of the NYPD needs to be completely reallocated into services that are beneficial to the people, social services, et cetera, and retraining and reimagining the way that we work with them. Because right now, there's a complete breakdown in communication. And I think that housing and the homeless, it's a huge issue here, especially in Hell's Kitchen, where we have a high concentration of homeless shelter hotels right now. I will immediately evaluate the groups that are running these hotels because I think that there's been a lack of accountability in those areas. Providing services have not happened. They're getting a lot of money, and they're not fulfilling their end of the bargain. And I think that we really need to hold them accountable for that so that people can get the services they need, move on, and find themselves permanent housing, and we need to help with that.
Alita, when you talk about the police department budget, do you have a sort of right sizing number in mind in terms of the police department budget or in terms of the uniform headcount of the police department? Those are at roughly, you know, $6 billion and 35,000 officers. Any numbers you want to put to those?
I think people, I mean, as I hear it from them directly, people are resigning on a regular basis. We don't have new officers coming in at the levels that we used to. So I think that what we need to look at is where we're budget, what we're budgeting for. Is it militarization? Do we have the police in our schools? Is that something that we need to be spending money on, or are there better ways that we could be using the money?
Thank you. Arthur, over to you for two district issues.
By the way, the budget is over $10 billion.
Depends what you count. Okay, go ahead.
To me, the most important issue in our district is affordable housing. I think it's bizarre that even my public defender lawyer daughter doesn't make enough money to live anywhere in the third district, unless she lived in my, you know, in my apartment. We have a district that's had the most, the greatest number of luxury apartments built of any district in the city, probably by a multiple of four, with Hudson Yards opening up. We need to, if, as a city council person, I would press for a major capital program, end mandatory inclusionary housing, and then use a major capital program to build affordable housing in our district and stop all the luxury development that's going on, including the governor's plan to build buildings around Penn Station and the buildings they want to build around Port Authority. That's issue number one. The second issue to me is public safety. Both, you know, I believe that the police have abandoned the streets. I think we need to return to community policing, which means cops on the beat. I think we need to cut the budget of the police department. We need to make cops accountable. We need to arm the civilian complaint review board with the power to discipline officers. We need to make police responsible for the acts of their co-officers that they witness. So we need to, and we need to really implement this program that has been proposed to have community precinct councils vote on who should be the commander in a precinct. So I think--
Arthur, on affordable housing, just quickly, is there a difference between luxury and market rate in your mind? When you say luxury housing, are you talking about all market rate housing? Is there any difference there?
In our district, market rate housing and luxury housing, to me, is a synonym. Neither is affordable to the average working-class person. I'm counsel to the Transport Workers Union. Nobody in our union could afford to live anywhere in our district, whether it's market rate or luxury.
All right, we're going to talk housing a little bit more in one of the next couple rounds of questions, so we'll dig in a little bit more there soon. Leslie, over to you.
Yeah, I think I have to agree with some of my counterparts here. But my first priority, without doubt, Ben, is COVID recovery. We're looking at over a $5 billion deficit in next year's budget, so we're working within that framework. And aside from the federal and state grants we're getting and the PPEs that's coming in, we have to get our small businesses, our restaurants, our hospitality industry, our arts back up and running. That's a priority for me. And the reason why it's a priority is because in our district specifically, these industries are so inextricably tied to our district and really determine our economic prospects. Our COVID recovery also includes public schools. You're a parent. I'm a parent. You know, I've seen it that the DOE has really failed with a comprehensive plan, and we're in a year of getting back to school and having a quality education even with the rough times of COVID. And I do agree with Arthur, affordable housing, it would be my second priority. And it's not just for the very, very high or the very, very low. We need across the board, we have to commit to balanced income housing across all AMI bands. This is what keeps neighborhoods vibrant. This is what keeps neighborhoods healthy. And our next city councilperson is going to oversee three new affordable housing projects in our district, and that's not including the NICA rebuild that is undergoing discussion right now. So our next councilperson will oversee some of these affordable housing projects, which is very important.
All right, a lot there. I want to follow up on one thing. Well, I think the city budget picture for at least one more year is looking a little better, given the federal aid. But on small businesses that you mentioned, and the recovery especially being important to this district, what's one lever that you would try to pull, a city government lever, to help with small business recovery?
Absolutely. So there are the big, there's the big things, right? Which, the big things are usually aid, right? We need aid. We need, we're Democrats, so we need this money program. But the small things are just little things that are business education programs, free legal counseling. Get rid of all these arbitrary fines. That's the one thing. When I go around the district and I talk to restaurant owners and business owners, they say, you know, "We're getting dinged $5,000 here, $1,000 here, and we're just trying to keep our businesses up and running."
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you. Eric, over to you.
Number one priority is COVID-19 recovery, economic recovery, getting our small businesses open and running again, getting people back to work, our arts and culture industry. And that really depends in a big way on the city getting a handle on many of the issues that are keeping people away, sanitation, public safety. The city needs to competently, be competently run. Number two is the homelessness and affordability crisis. It is shameful that in the richest city and the richest country in the world, we have people dying on the street from lack of housing and untreated mental illness. So we need to prevent homelessness by, with rental assistance and tenant protections. People who are in shelter, we need a path into permanent housing for them with rented rental vouchers. And the people who are living on the streets, we need to rethink our approach to homeless outreach. And those are just a few of the things that we need to do.
When you say rethink that approach, go ahead, take a few more seconds on that. What does that, what does that mean? What does, how does the outreach approach need to change?
So right now, our homeless outreach workers, they're approaching folks on the street and asking them to come to Ward's Island. They've been to Ward's Island. They don't want to go back towards Island. We need different kinds of shelter, like safe haven shelters that have a lower barrier to entry that are located closer to where folks are. We need permanent housing for folks who are on the street. Many of them, they don't want to go to shelter. They're waiting for permanent supportive housing.
Yeah, got it. Thank you. And we'll do a little more on housing in a few minutes. Phelan, over to you for two district issues you see as most pressing and what you would specifically try to do about them if elected to the city council. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that if you lined up 100 New Yorkers from District 3 on the street and you asked them what their most important issues are, I think it's going to vary largely depending on the color of their skin. But if you're asking me, you know, someone who is a single-gay dad, a small business operator, and a black New Yorker, I think racial inequality probably has to be the biggest and probably the most responsible of so many of New Yorkers' concerns, specifically homelessness, especially in District 3, where I think people are really sort of inundated with it, and I think they're really scared about how this problem is going to be fixed. And I think that as New Yorkers, we've all been guilty of a certain amount of apathy, especially when it comes to the homeless population. You know, sheltering homeless families in this city has always been done out of emergency and necessity. You know, it's always failed to keep up with demands. So what do we do? Well, we turn to sheltering hotel rooms, cluster apartments, because it's actually cheaper than just being prepared. So we need more shelters. We need to have serious conversations in our community about where those are built and how to pay for them. And we need to have more compassion, you know, for people who are truly suffering. And my second, of course, is land use and affordable housing. You know, we were facing record levels of homelessness, affordability issues, stagnant wages before the pandemic. You know, now combined with the pandemic, I think we need to redefine what public value of what affordable housing really is and what that means.
And is there one more thing you can name in terms of, you know, obviously, addressing racial inequalities in immense, larger umbrella? Are there, is there one city policy that's, you know, sort of toward the top of your priorities that you think would make a significant impact on the racial inequalities in the city or specifically in this district?
100% education, education. And for decades in this city, we have defunded education. We need to pride black and brown communities of equal education, and you deprive them of jobs because of the color of their skin, because of transphobia, because of homophobia. You don't give them the same opportunities as everyone else gets. You are going to have homelessness. You are going to have crime. This is always going to continue. So we need to take a really hard look at education and the importance of it because education is a crime deterrent, 100%.
If there's more time in a little bit, maybe we'll hear some specifics on education in terms of how you would try to approach that. All right, next round of questions here. We are on to the issue of housing and development. As I just said before, we're going to dig into that some more. So we're going to start this round with Arthur, and then again, move in the same order. But I'd like everybody to speak a little bit about what their philosophy is. We've heard from a couple people a little bit on this so far, but what is your philosophy about development in the district? What kind of housing development would you try to pursue? Would you try to give your, you know, blessing to in the land use process if you're a city council member? Is there room for market rate development in this district? If so, where? Are you only focused on fully affordable development? And what are the ramifications of that? And are there parts of the district where you think there's room for more housing density? All of these types of things go into your lens as a city council member if elected when it comes to affordability, housing, and development in the district. So folks could try to address the sort of different aspects of how you're thinking about this issue, and again, specifically in the district, where there might be room for more housing of whatever kind you're talking about pursuing. So Arthur, go ahead and get us started, please.
My, to me, we don't need any more market rate or-- My, to me, we don't need any more market rate or luxury housing in our district. There's already a glut, a glut of it. And one of the reasons that I, I'm such a big believer in affordable housing, besides that I want my kids to be able to live near me, is, is that it, it also has a racial impact on our community, because if you take out NICA, our district is probably over 90% white, which is absurd. It's absurd. It's, you know, and the village section where I was on community board too, is 94% white, 6%, 4% Asian, right? That's absurd. So to me, the key is not relying on the private sector to build affordable housing. So that's why I'm against MI mandatory inclusionary housing, because, because that relies on the private sector to build affordable housing. It's why I'm against the RAD program and about to, you know, file a lawsuit about that, because the federal government is gonna give $40 billion to the city and yet the, the city wants to turn over NICA to private developers and private ownership in order to fix housing. That's the wrong approach. We need the government to be involved, we need government money to be involved. And, 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 and we need, and we could use capital money. Borrowing is so cheap right now. We need a capital program to develop that housing and it could be anywhere. And the other thing we also need to do is repurpose, well, someone told me the other day that they think only 70% of office space is gonna be reused post-COVID. We're gonna have all these buildings and hotels and office, office space that's gonna be available for two things, schools, it's gonna be available for school space and it's gonna be available for housing. That's who we need to put the money in and it's all over the district. Somehow during COVID, on the corner of 14th Street and Sixth Avenue, two blocks from where I live, they built two luxury towers last year. So where a lot is, where a space is that can be developed into affordable housing really could be anywhere in the entire district.
Now, now you seem okay with this, but when you eschew mandatory inclusionary housing, which is, you know, in theory meant for districts like this where, where the market rate housing would help fund the subsidies for, for affordable housing, for using the city's capital program to focus only on affordable housing, that will likely yield fewer, fewer units, but more affordability, less market rate. You're, you're okay with that trade off?
Well, I don't know that it'll yield fewer units, because I think the units that are coming out are, are, are not available to people who are working class. And I, and I don't think it would utilize everything in the city's capital budget. There has to be a special capital expenditure to, to do that. And I don't think it's gonna occur through mandatory inclusionary. I don't believe MIH. And one of the big problems with MIH is upzoning and cutting communities out of the ULR process. And I am a big, big, big believer in community input into the zoning process. They're basically ignored in our district, they're ignored in the city, they're ignored. The communities need to be part of that process and shaping it so that it occurs in a way that's neighborhood friendly as well as, as affordable.
I, I guess that's the city council member's job to make sure that happens in ULRP, right? All right, Leslie, over to you on your, how you're thinking about housing, affordability, development, if there's specific places in the district you think could be ripe for more housing development of some kind? Go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a problem in the city, it's caught in a, the, the city is caught in this vicious circle. Our real estate taxes are very closely linked to the city's budget, right? So what we're seeing in our district is that there are two, two problems. People either can't afford to move in because prices are going up, or the people that are already here are getting priced out. And in my building, I've seen it firsthand, we've had two people in our 61-unit pre-war building, two are in for, one, well, one is in foreclosure and one is going to foreclosure. Because, and they've lived here for over 20 years. So they're getting priced out. So we have to somehow untangle that the city is saying, yes, we need a more affordable housing, but then when they build this big housing, they're putting up our real estate taxes to just the, the, the lower level and the middle, the middle level. I think that has to stop. We have to create affordable housing so people can live where they work. I keep saying it, it's so important. There are specific sites, actually, I mentioned this in, in our previous question. There's a DEP site, what we're calling it, and the MTA site, one's on 54th and 9th, and then the DEP site, which is in the 40s, 47th, 48th and 10th. Those are designated sites for affordable housing. They are empty lots right now, and I think we have to preserve those as across the board affordable housing for all levels, not just one particular level. So those are two specific sites I would look at. I would also look at that, we haven't really talked about much, is Bayview State Prison in Chelsea. So that was emptied, it hasn't been used since Hurricane Sandy. And I think it's a, it's a state building or state, or state-run, so I think we have to work with our state senators and representatives to create that into affordable housing, whether that be artist housing that I'm pushing for, educator housing specific, that can be determined later, but those, you asked for specifics and those are three specific sites.
That's great, I appreciate the specifics in, in response to the request for specifics. Just very quickly, do you believe in, in trying to utilize mandatory inclusionary housing in the district to, you know, potentially upzone some areas? There's obviously this Soho NoHo rezoning neighbor, in the neighborhood, in the nearby areas that's moving through the process. Do you back or oppose potentially doing something like that in this district?
So I, I, I think that is a very, very slippery slope and I am against the upzoning in general, specifically for that instance that you just cited, because this is what I think about upzoning, two things. One, when something is very attractive to developers and they're jumping at it, it's a red flag, right? It means that something, the priorities are not straight. And two, which is not necessarily an affordable housing issue, but it goes with it, is we have to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. I, I truly believe that. And I think sometimes when we're single folk.
Sorry, we'll have to leave that there, but maybe we'll get a chance for you to talk about what that means to you in a little bit. Eric, over to you on housing.
One of the major responsibilities of a council member is land use. And every land use action provides an opportunity if taken advantage of. And here in the district, Community Board Two and Community Board Four have been really great partners in creating a lot of community benefits out of land use actions, affordable housing for a range of incomes from, for formerly homeless and very low income to middle income housing. Investment in parks. We worked with CB4 in the West 20s on the 600 block to get hundreds of units of affordable housing, $30 million for Hudson River Park, a new EMS station in the base. Working closely with community boards on specific land use actions and really identifying new locations when we can do that, that's where I believe we'll be able to generate the most affordable housing. One site that I would like to use that hasn't been discussed much is the Con Ed parking lot in the Far West 20s. We've, Community Board Four has approached Con Ed over the years. They said, thanks, but no thanks, but I don't think we have the luxury of not taking advantage of that parking lot. And I think we need to work something out with Con Ed, that's a win-win for all. Repurposing distressed commercial properties, absolutely, hotels and office buildings. And learning from the mistakes of the past, like the Highline rezoning from the Bloomberg administration, that could have been a mixed-use neighborhood with thousands of units of affordable housing. Instead, if you go over the Highline at night, you look at those buildings, there's not one light on in those buildings. It's luxury housing with pied-attars.
And, and just quickly, Eric, do you think this district is a place where mandatory inclusionary housing could be better utilized to leverage market rate housing to, to build affordable housing?
In limited circumstances, I don't like these blanket rezonings. I prefer focusing on individual spots that could be upzoned in partnership with the community to create more housing.
Okay, Phelan, over to you.
I think that Hudson Yards is sort of the perfect example in our district of billions of dollars wasted on what could have been an opportunity to create real housing equity. You know, I can't afford to shop there, let alone live there. And I think there's a reason why, you know, local politicians and candidates this year are now stating loud and clear in their campaigns that they will not be accepting contributions from for-profit real estate developers. Well, because up until now, that's exactly what was done. And last year, 70% of all new construction deals were given to for-profit developers. But then, on the other hand, last year alone, we had 25 million applications for the affordable house rate, affordable housing lottery. You know, residents trying to obtain housing in the lottery system is a joke, they waited years, it's a tiresome, complex, very defeating process. And applicants sometimes aren't even notified if they were accepted or rejected. And I think a possible way to create affordable housing, especially in District Three, is the 421G program, which is basically a series of, of tax breaks for commercial to residential conversions, specifically in Midtown. And we know that just 10% of Manhattan workers have returned to office space and, will return to office space in October and in Midtown in those spaces.
And, and what do you think about the idea of, of upzoning parts of the district to spur both market rate and affordable housing using, using mandatory inclusionary housing?
I mean, it really just depends. I, I'm not crazy about the Soho NoHo rezoning. I really think it's just a way for for-profit real estate developers to bid, to build big giant buildings. And the amount of affordable housing will be actually really small. And specifically, when you look at Hudson Yards, 400 of those units were categorized as affordable. And what that means is these apartments are set aside for 50 to 60% of the, the median income.
Gotcha. Hudson Yards, a little bit of a, of a kind of unicorn project, but got your point otherwise. So Phelan, you have to, you have to leave in a couple of minutes. What I'm gonna do is, you have a family commitment that we wanna respect, so we wanna get you out of here on time. I'm gonna have Marnie and Alita finish up this round, I'm gonna give you the first answer on the next round and then we'll say goodbye to you. How does that sound?
That sounds great.
Okay, Marnie, over to you on housing.
So I would say this, I believe that market rate housing is really synonymous with luxury housing. And the way I look at the district, I don't think there should be any more market, market rate housing. And I know that's kind of like an extreme position, but when you have 92,000 homeless people and the fact that MIH is an abysmal failure, I think it's a bad, it's a, it's a horrible housing policy that does not house people. I think we need to throw it in the garbage. There's a stat from a group called Human Scale that said that since 2016, there was, so there were supposed to be 80,000 promised affordable units and only 2,000 were built, 2,000 affordable units out of 80,000, 80,000 promised units. So that shows that it's a failure and I think we need to be really honest about it. And I, I feel like it's a developer giveaway. Also, another issue is that the community benefits that, you know, the communities get, maybe they get a park, maybe they get a school. But the problem is, is that when you put this kind of housing in the, in a district, it gentrifies the area so much that rents increase like so dramatically that it ends up making the district completely unaffordable. Also, the, the, the issue of secondary gentrification, I'll always remember when the Highline was built, you know, as beautiful as it was, or as it is, the, the rent for the Hafking Bar tripled and they had to close. And to me, this is one of the worst problems that I see and I feel like the city never ever addresses it. So all these wonderful small businesses, you know, close and, and tenants have to leave their, their homes.
Quickly, quickly, Marnie, why do you say mandatory inclusionary housing has been a failure? It, it actually hasn't really been used as intended, which would be in, in wealthier areas of the city. Why do you say it's been a failure?
Well, I feel like it's been a failure because they've promised like affordable units, thousands and thousands, 80K promised units and only 2,000 were built. I mean, just, you know, you walk outside, you, you look at the state of our city. I mean, we have, you know, you know, horrific homelessness crisis. I mean, I feel like, like I, I wanna see 100% deeply affordable housing and also what I wanna see is that development is community-driven.
Gotcha. I think we're getting at, at some of the tension of the city's overall housing crisis in this discussion, it's very, very interesting. Alita, over to you on your sort of framework on housing and development, anywhere in the district you think there could be new housing, what you would want it to look like? Go ahead.
Well, I'm actually the only person here who's lived in Section Eight housing my whole life. I believe strongly in mixed-income buildings. I think it's the most successful model. I don't know why we haven't done this all across the city. I live across the hall from a neighbor for over 20 years who was previously at an SRO and down the hall from him, there's a Tony Award-winning musician. We all work together to maintain a community that isn't driven by the fact that we are all living on a very, very low income or very, very high income or just, you know, 80 apartments with low-income tenants living amongst super wealthy millionaires. I see, you know, I'm very strong supporter of the pied-attar tax. We have luxury buildings surrounding us where I live that are mostly empty. I'm being used as investment properties for people living overseas. I don't know how that makes sense in a city with people who don't have homes. I, I'm, I'm not against RAD. I think that because the communities that it's been, that, that are asked, that are looking to bring in the private developer actually want it. And I'm a big proponent for listening to the community. We were, I, I've experienced what that looks like as well, having a private developer run your building. And the truth is, when you have a good company or a good, I'm sorry, management company, they're there to support. I mean, they have a lot of, you know, they have to pass their REACT score and make sure that your building is up to code. They provide services for the people who live there, whether that be social services or, you know, community-based programs for seniors, for children. It can be a good relationship if you have the right.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, no, no, that, that's interesting. Thank you. No, I, I, I'll let you keep going there instead of, instead of asking a follow-up to you. So thank you for that. We will go to our next question, we're gonna start with Phelan. So this next round is about getting around in the district and the larger city. What you, what your priorities would be on things like the streets, great streetscape, transit, things related to buses, bikes, parking, loading zones, helping, you know, small businesses, apartment buildings with, with efficiency in terms of the many deliveries that come in, all sorts of things related to how people get around and what the streetscape looks like. So I'm looking for your priorities on that broader topic and some of those specifics I mentioned, including, of course, the importance of subway accessibility perhaps, although that's not always under the domain of the city council, obviously with the MTA being state-run, but certainly how to help get the city's very slow buses moving faster, which many lower-income and people of color use to get around this district, but also the larger city, of course. Phelan, go ahead. How would you be thinking about and prioritizing transit and streetscape issues if elected to the city council?
Transit is a, a public good and I think the Department of Transportation would be very well-served by budgetary increases. I think specifically residents in the village and in District Three are worried about traffic safety, they're worried about bike safety, pedestrian safety. And I, they, they very well should be. I think we need to invest in a creation of effective, but equitable transportation that's gonna take a reallocation of funds that can help reform and build community health programs, youth summer employment opportunities and training. And, and this is really gonna be about guaranteeing the right to free, clean, quality public transportation by fully funding, repairing and expanding the badly deteriorating New York City public transit system and ultimately abolishing fares. And I think expansion should prioritize services into underserved communities, including bus, rapid transit, light rail, unifying transit and payment systems, and vastly expanding low-carbon transit options in New York, including publicly-owned electric buses, trolleys, commuter rails, bike sharing, as well as e-bikes and scooters.
And, and what do you think about this, um, this busway model now that we've seen it roll out on 14th Street and then a couple of other places in the city?
No, I think it's gonna, it's gonna need expanded transit-oriented development and mixed-use zoning to, to really make that work. And we're gonna need more sustainable terms of energy and natural environment, which ultimately we have to think about walkable spaces, bikable spaces, and then, which in turn is gonna lead to minimizing car usage. bikable spaces, and then which in turn is going to lead to minimizing car usage, car spaces, light.
Well, Phelan, we thank you for that answer and for your participation in the debate, and and we will we'll say goodbye to you for the
Thanks, guys. I have to pick up my daughter. I really appreciate your time. Thank you to all the other candidates. As always, it's great to see you, and thank you very much, Max. Have a great day.
All right, Marnie, how are you thinking about streetscape issues and transit issues, getting around the district and making perhaps better use of the sidewalks, the streets and ways that people get around and come in and out?
Right, right. So, I mean, obviously pedestrians are the priority. So, you know, uh, you know, now the fact that we have sort of like the open restaurants, you know, now we have like more bikes, more scooters. You know, sometimes I am walking around thinking, oh, my God, how how can we really balance like all these, all these sort of competing interests? But, you know, pedestrians obviously are the priority. We need to keep them safe. Uh, I believe mass transit, the MTA, should be free. You know, I remember when it was free during the, you know, pandemic, and I feel like to really utilize that to its full extent, I think that would be great for all New Yorkers. But, you know, I do think expanded buses, I think is important. The M eleven on, you know, going down Ninth Avenue and up Tenth Avenue, it's so slow. So I think that needs to, that needs to be more funding, more expansion for there.
Sorry, how do you, how do you propose speeding up the buses?
Speeding up the buses or like maybe we need more funding to have more more of those buses. You know, I know, like, at nine o'clock in the morning, sometimes like you're waiting like forty-five minutes for the M eleven. And it should be like every ten minutes, and it even says it should be every ten minutes, but but it's not. You know, more funding, more buses. And also the issue with bikes, I think I had a Zoom with seniors about bikes. I think it's, I think the bikes are fine. I think it's an inexpensive, you know, way of getting around. I think people should have that. Also with scooters, you see that happening now. But I think the bikes also need some kind of regulation because the seniors are complaining to me that they're actually getting hit.
Alita, over to you. How are you thinking about these issues and what your top priorities would be?
Well, this is a very personal issue for me. Um, as a person with a disability, I struggle to use the train. There aren't enough elevators. I've been stuck down in a train because I've gotten off on a stop that I that doesn't have an elevator, or when my son was in the stroller, I almost had a panic attack because I didn't know how to get out. So I do use the buses a lot. I also am unable to use a bicycle, but I do support the bike lanes, although I find especially in our area that they're misused and people are running the wrong way on the bike lanes. And, you know, like Marnie said, I have seniors who live here that are terrified to walk across these wider streets. We have traffic cops, but it doesn't always feel as if they're managing the flow of traffic in a really in a good way. So again, I think accountability, especially when it comes to the buses, which I use all the time and people make fun of me, but I'm on those buses because they're the safest and easiest way for me to get around. But they don't come when they're scheduled. For a time being, we had a a monitor on our block with the time when the the bus would come. It'll be here in five minutes or ten, but it disappeared. I thought that was a great addition. It came from city council. I don't know where where it disappeared to. But, um, that's something that I think that we should be utilizing, and I think keeping the buses on schedule, on time. I don't know where that accountability would start, whether it's with the drivers or dispatch, but that's something that I think should be easy enough to manage. And I think that the subways need to have increased safety precautions put in them because as a young woman, I've had very distressful interactions on the subways when there's no one in the token tollboogle tokens, but in the tollboog or, you know, anywhere to be seen in the, you know. So I think people need to feel safe, and that's another piece for coming back to the city.
Arthur, uh, maybe you want to start. You were famously an opponent of the Fourteenth Street Busway. Have you rethought that at all? Would you do anything differently on that front? Do you see the model as something you'd want to expand in the district at this point? And how are you thinking about these issues more broadly?
I'm going to talk about them more broadly, and then I'll come down to the busway. You know, the the city does a mobility report every year, the Department of Transportation. And in the most recent one, it showed that forty percent of people use buses and subways either to get to work or for for trips they take. Thirty percent of people walk. Seventeen percent use cars, whether it's their own car or Ubers or taxis. Two percent use bikes, right? So what does that say? That says the key is subway and bus availability and sidewalk accessibility. So I, I'm, and I come to this question as general counsel for the Transport Workers Union for the last twenty years. So I know a lot about the transit system. I stood on the corner of Fourteenth Street and Sixth Avenue. The buses were free until Labor Day last year, and there was no reason they couldn't continue to be free because in fact, the the fact that they were free meant that buses were up to fifty percent capacity by Labor Day, whereas the subways were at ten percent of pre-COVID use. I think buses should be free. It would not cost that much money. I think subway fares, as I say in my slogan, too damn high. And the way we deal with that is to do something the city stopped doing about twenty years ago, which is putting money into the into the operational budget of the Transit Authority. The city used to put a lot of money in, was once a city agency. People don't know that. It wasn't until the nineteen seventies when it moved to the state during the fiscal crisis. The city should put, you know, I've said for now, a billion dollars a year into the New York City Transit Authority so that fares, making it free would never happen at this point. But we are the most passenger subsidized transit system in the United States. The Times reported that last week. With respect to bikes, we also need congestion pricing needs to get put in. The the feds have cleared it. It's gone through the E I S. We got to do congestion pricing that keeps cars out of the Central Business District, which is what our district is.
Last few seconds on bikes and the busways. Go ahead.
Okay, we need to, we need to keep electric bikes out of the busway, out of the bus lanes. And the busway itself, I was not an opponent of the busway. I was an opponent of doing it without any consultation with the community and doing it in a way that had draconian, before COVID, had draconian impacts on the community. Now, without all the the four higher vehicles, it seems to be fine, but I don't understand why it has to be in effect from five AM till ten PM, when it could just be in effect during rush hours. So, and I have a lawsuit pending about all the stops they cut out as part of S B S. They cut out all the local stops and disabled inaction, who I represented in getting elevators on Fourteenth Street on the subways there, and I represent another litigation we've sued over the elimination of local bus stops. So
Expand the, expand the busway model in the district or not?
Well, I don't think there's anywhere else you could do the buswee model except maybe they could do it on Thirty Fourth, Forty Second Street, which largely they've already barred rights and left turns on Thirty Fourth and Forty Second Street. I think those, those are far more ideal places for that kind of a project than Fourteenth Street was.
All right, Leslie.
Yes.
Are you thinking about these, these many different pieces of how people get around and what the streetscape looks like? Go ahead.
Absolutely. I'm a very, very big proponent of public transportation in general. Pre-COVID, uh, I rode the bus and the subway four times a day religiously every single day, and I do it right now. And I, and I I post it every time I do because it's important that people get back to public transportation. Because I think a healthy public transportation system creates a healthy urban environment, especially for lower income people. And it gives a transportation equity component. Subway ridership is down about seventy percent and buses about fifty percent during COVID, and we have to get that back up. So as we're coming out of COVID, what I would do and concentrate on is invest in a comprehensive designated bus lane grid. And you ask what would make the buses go faster? That's what would make the buses go faster if they had their own designated lane. I would also, I'm also supporting the track of an all-electric fleet by twenty forty. I think they might be moving that back to up, I should say. So that's a renewable energy component of it. And yes, make, let's work to make all the subway stations ADA accessible. That that's a really big nut to crack because most of them are not. If we're going to promote public transportation, it has to be accessible for all New Yorkers. And I'm I'm really big on the green component of it. I think people laughed at me a few years ago when I said we should have electric charging stations in New York City or we should look, at least look at the grid, right, and see what we can do with the grid for that, for both public and private. And now what's happening? G M is turning to all electric vehicles in a few years. And President Biden just promised over five, oh, about five hundred thousand electric charging stations to urbans, to to different cities around the country. So it's coming. We just have to keep up with it.
And Leslie, what do you, what do you think about the expansion of of city bike and bike lanes and, you know, opportunities to to bike in the district and beyond?
Yeah, I think the bike lanes are a good idea. I think the way they did it is just slap a bu, a bike lane here and slap a bike lane there. I think like a bus lane, I think for things to work, they have to work in tandem with other transportation ways, other ways of getting around. So I do think for a bike lane to work, they have to A, be protected, and it has to be a designated grid.
Eric, over to you. You've waited, waited a while now to to get back into the conversation, but we want to hear your thoughts to close out this round on transit and streetscape issues and what would be at the top of your priorities. Go ahead.
We need a protected bus lane network. We need to build out the bike network. I live on Twenty Fourth and Ninth. There's no bike lane on Tenth Avenue. And every time I ride up Tenth Avenue, it's, I'm literally taking my life in my hands. It's very dangerous. We need a protected bike lane on Tenth Avenue. We need to restore twenty-four seven subway service. But one thing I want to focus on as council member is the pedestrian experience because no matter what form of transportation you use, at one point in your journey, you're a pedestrian. So we need to widen sidewalks when possible. I'd really like to work with C B four to widen the sidewalks on Ninth Avenue, which are very crowded. Thirteen Street, Seventh, Seventeenth Street, very narrow sidewalks. We need to crack down on building owners who don't fix their sidewalks. If the city has to do the work and build the owner, we need to do that. Pedestrian ramps at the street corners, ponding is a big issue, where puddles will sit there for days. It's horrible for wheelchair users and seniors, and the city doesn't consider it a serious issue, but it is. And finally, I've proposed rethinking sanitation. On trash day, we are used to walking amongst big piles of trash on the sidewalk when people put the trash out. We should look at using the roadbed and designated areas to put the trash out. They do it that way. In many cities around the world, it's something I proposed piloting in my sanitation plan.
And say, say a little bit more about where where you think that should potentially head if it if it works out?
So I think we should pilot something where each block could designate areas where on trash delivery day, instead of the sidewalks filling up with trash that sometimes sits there for a very long time, come up with areas. There's a group called Check Pets in Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen that's been pushing for this, and they have some prototypes of some corrals where the trash could go, one specific location where it's picked up. It's something that the city needs to pilot. It was, the city was moving in that direction towards a pilot before COVID. It's something we need to pick up.
Yeah, that pilot, I think, is slowly, slowly moving towards pickup, although there might be challenges with the way it was designed, relying on sort of private sector folks to to jump in. Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. So we are in our, we're we're moving to our final round of sort of broader answers, and then we'll do a quick lightning round of yes, no's and then closing statements. So on to our our next round here, we're going to start with Alita for this round. And Alita, and everybody else, the the question is about education in schools. So the the role of the city council member is in some ways fairly limited when it comes to education. There's not a lot of education policy, for example, that the city council can legislate, given mayoral control of city schools and a number of other things around the power dynamics there. But the city council, of course, has oversight powers, budgetary powers. City council members can push for more school seats in the capital budgeting process. There's a lot of different things that city council members can influence around education. Of course, one of the other topics that's been coming up quite a bit is around admissions practices, not just at the specialized high schools, but really more broadly through the school system. So the question here is again fairly broad. It's what would be your education priorities for the district if elected to the city council? I gave you some possible buckets to touch on there, but really interested in everybody's education priorities for the district. Alita, we'll start with you.
Well, I think first we need to put a moratorium on ever cutting a school's budget. That should not be a place where we look to find money. I think as the only parent of a public school child in this race, I see clearly where a lot of things need to change, and that starts with class size. We saw during COVID how very detrimental the size of our classes were to bringing our kids back in the room. My son's been in a full remote model because there's just not been enough room for him to be in the classroom safely. And it's been the most horrible experience that I could ever wish upon anyone. And I think that he's basically lost a year of school because of it. We're going to have to really do a lot of work coming back this next year to either catch our kids up or figure out how to level the playing field. When it comes to the, you know, you mentioned the G N T programs and the testing. My son's in a school where G N T is sort of the model across the board. You're not tested to get into it. That's just the way the curriculum works. And I think, given the space to develop their curriculum, it's works for the students who are there. I mean, the the communities that, we want the the communities in your neighborhood to be the communities that are attending your schools and not for people to be fleeing their neighborhood because the school isn't good enough and and sticking them in a school elsewhere. So I think we need to find ways to create equity in our schools, racial equity, financial equity. And that definitely is going to start with PTAs. You know, if you're in a wealthier neighborhood, your PTA is obviously going to be more well-funded, and those students are going to have extracurriculars that other kids and other
Thank you. Arthur, education priorities if elected to the city council?
Okay, we had this wonderful budget passed last two weeks ago by the by the state legislature, which restored foundation funding. And foundation funding, for those of your listeners who don't know, is a program which came into play after a lawsuit was won about the lack of of a decent education being provided to students in the city of New York. So foundation is starting to flow again, which is billions and billions of dollars. We need to make, so as a city council person, we need, we would need to make sure that that money is flowing to schools that need it because actually each school has a target in that program. Second, I'm a big believer in returning to community control of schools. Now, I know that's a state, again, it's a state education law issue, but I think the city council could take a strong stand on that. I am for expanding school seats. That's a city issue. The the overcrowding of schools is one of the reasons why the education is so substandard. We have this opportunity, as I said before, to utilize closed office spaces and expand the number of school buildings with that or school spaces without actually having to go into the School Construction Authority, spending billions of dollars to build schools. So that would be something that I would push for. That's not a state issue. And I I believe that the, the, another area that that I feel very strongly about is charter schools, which I feel have overwhelmed the system.
So keep the cap on charter schools, I assume that means?
Or raise it. I mean, raise it, making it, making it lower, but at least
raises and lower. Very quickly, you said something pretty significant there. You want to do away with mayoral control of city schools?
Yes, I I think that, I think that just like I'm a big fan of community, meaningful community input into zoning. I also believe we need to return back to the model of communities being more in control of their of their neighborhood schools. And also, one thing I did leave out, I think housing is a long-term issue. If housing becomes more affordable, neighborhoods become more integrated, the schools will will also improve in the process.
Leslie, over to you on your education priorities.
Absolutely. So Ben, you said that maybe the city council person doesn't have a, or a huge input in education. And I'll I'll give you an example how I think I think they could. Last year, when
Just just on education policy coming through the Department of Education, I cited a number, number of other ways where where city council members do have a lot of influence.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And last year, when we knew that we weren't going to get back to school in a normal way, when COVID hit, I actually went to my city council person's office. I went to other elected officials' office, and I said, guys, we need a plan for September. We know this isn't going to work. I went to other elected officials' office and I said, guys, we need a plan for September. We know this isn't going to work. And the answer I got was Leslie, the DOE is just so big, they're, they're going to get a plan, you know, let's wait and see. And it wasn't good enough. So over the summer I called Columbia University, I called Fordham, I called Pace, and I asked them what their student teachers were doing. Because if we weren't opening our schools a hundred percent, then their student teachers didn't have a spot. So I created a program, the Student Teacher Virtual Learning Initiative, and I got student teachers into our Title I schools to help with remote learning. Um, because we knew that our regular DOE teachers were not going to be able to juggle the, the, the jobs of three. Um, so while this helped educators, this helped parents, this helped students. And now we have hundreds of kids in our districts, Title I schools, that's getting uh live virtual learning. Um, and I want to keep that movement going. So what would I concentrate on? I would concentrate on reducing class sizes and securing TAs in every class. We cannot keep stuffing our classrooms and then expect teachers to deliver a high-quality education experience. Um, who thinks this is a formula for success? I don't think any, anybody. Class sizes must, must be reduced. Uh, not only for education quality, but um SCL as well. And uh, I also would like to boost the framework, the, the supportive services, social workers for schools, nurses for schools, um, fresh and healthy foods for schools. Uh, incorporate environmental education in schools. So these are things that can be done. Um, and those are things that I would like to work on and prioritize. I'm on the education committee on our community board and I've been in and out of schools all, all year.
Several, several of those items, especially if there's a large expansion, obviously of, of school buildings to, to make more room, reduce overcrowding, reduce class sizes perhaps, cost a bunch of more money. Do you have thoughts on where that would come from?
I absolutely do. I think we need a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. We are one of the only cities with an Ivy League school or, or a, a, a high-end school that does not have it. Um, what a pilot program does, Columbia, I'll give you Columbia, for example, university, they don't pay any taxes, right? Which is, which is appropriate. Um, but their endowment is billions and billions of dollars. And by the way, their inbound, endowment grew uh, over COVID, unlike our community school, our community colleges. So payment in lieu of taxes is where these uh, these Ivy League schools get into, they come into agreement with their local city uh, city councils and they pay a certain amount, which will fill the uh, the, the coffers of the public schools. This has happened in Boston, it's happening in Philadelphia. And actually, I'm quite surprised that our city council has not explored this uh, this situation yet.
Okay, uh, Eric, uh, back to you on your education priorities for the district and, and the city at large, if, if you want to go there.
So I'm going to fight to make sure that the billions of dollars we just received in the state budget are spent in the classrooms. And this is one of the reasons why the UFT is supporting me, not spending it on DOE bureaucracy, but to reduce class sizes and to, to increase the teacher-student ratio. Even here in our district, PS thirty-three, they have some classes that have well over thirty kids in a class, and that's not okay. I have close working relationships with all the principals in our district and the PTAs are familiar with the needs of each school. We need to invest in the capital plants of each school. The air conditioning needs to be installed in PS three-three, elevator access at PS two-twelve and PS eleven. We need school nurses and guidance counselors in every school, which is part of my mental health plan I just put out. It's very important to have nurses and guidance counselors and social workers in schools because it's all tied together. Mental illness often develops in adolescents and it's so important to detect it early and treat it early. So we need folks, all professionals in our schools who can identify those issues and make linkages to mental health care. The billions of dollars we just received in the state budget, it needs to be spent smartly and in the schools.
And Eric, just, just quickly, you got at this, and this seems to be a fairly uh widespread belief that the Department of Education has become bloated with uh, you know, folks at the central offices and not enough resources into the schools. How did that happen? Has the, has the city council sort of fallen down on Department of Education uh budget oversight?
From what I understand, during the Bloomberg era, when they moved to Tweed Courthouse, uh, there were many, many lawyers hired, many different layers of bureaucracy added. And that's just continued in the de Blasio administration. I don't want to speak for uh, the transport, the education committee. But the Department of Education, not only have they added different layers of bureaucracy, but they change every couple of years. That's something I've observed over the years. So the next mayor and the next chancellor, they're going to need to simplify the chain of command and remain consistent. So parents and families and teachers and principals don't have to relearn a new system every two years.
Okay, and Marnie, over to you to round out our education round. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I think everybody has said
You can repeat some of it.
You know, I mean, you know, one of the major things is we cannot cut funding for education ever, ever, ever. It should never, ever be cut. So that's something that I feel very strongly about. Again, uh, you know, I don't know if the other candidates are, are uh kind of experiencing this, but uh, I teach figure skating uh, and I like this generation is so uh, they're just like uh, you know, balls of anxiety. Uh, and you know, I just remember, I don't remember that sort of in my generation. And uh, you know, I just feel like kids, like they really need help. They really need help, like, you know, just dealing with the pandemic. Um, social services for schools, um, you know, again, reducing class sizes, uh, you know, the improving remote learning, whether it was remote learning, I, it had such a, you know, horrible effect on black and brown kids. That need, that needs to be changed. Um, you know, why can't we get? You know, I also feel that, you know, connect connectivity and wifi and free, you know, uh, free internet, that should be for our entire city. I mean, everybody should have access to that. And we should make private industry like Google and, you know, all those, uh, you know, big tech giants uh pay for it. I don't know why, like, we don't put pressure on them right now. Um,
And Marnie is, is um, what do you think about where desegregating the city's very segregated schools should be in the, in the priority order?
Well, it should be like in the top priority. I mean, definitely, you know, the easy answer, if you end segregation in housing, you end segregation in schools. Um, but I think also like I'm opposed to all the school screens, all those like, all the testing. Um, I mean, I think we should take that out of the admissions process and that would help. I was just going to say that like city council, like the, the mayor has so much control. But maybe city council needs to act like a check on the mayor and that's a way that, that a council member can actually exert, you know, more control. Uh, you know, and then the other thing I just wanted to say is that we have such a competitive environment. It's so competitive now. And I just feel it puts a lot of stress on the kids. Uh, there's something called turning the tide. Um, it's an
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to move on there, but
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sure folks can find that in your, on your website or social media. All right, we're doing a little lightning round here. I'm going to call on you for a yes, no, or very, very short answer on a five or six topics. And then we're moving into our closing statements of one minute each. So uh, lightning round, these are yes, no, or very short answers. Uh, in the city council, what issue committee would you like to chair if you could choose any? Eric?
Sanitation and solid waste.
Marnie?
Land use.
Alita?
Education.
Arthur?
Um, public safety and transportation.
Leslie?
Uh, probably either environment or education.
Do you support uh what's known as infill development in NYCHA land, building new housing? Uh, some mix of affordability, even if it's all affordable. Do you support in general, the concept of infill housing development in NYCHA land? Marnie, we know your answer. Why don't you start us off?
No!
Alita? Alita?
At the uh, behest of the community.
Okay, uh, Arthur?
Uh, I absolutely oppose it and think with the forty billion, the, the forty billion coming in from the feds, it's absolutely unnecessary.
Leslie?
Uh, no, I'm not a supporter, but I think there are avenues where we can look where it might work.
Eric?
In limited circumstances, yes.
Okay. How long have you lived in City Council District Three? Leslie?
Seventeen years.
Eric?
Six years.
Marnie?
Twenty-seven years.
Alita?
I have to tell you how old I am.
Years going on forty.
All right, Arthur?
Forty years.
Okay. There is uh, often a, a concept known as member deference in the city council where the larger city council defers to the city council member who has the land use decision in their district. Do you believe in a blanket member deference policy on land use matters? Alita?
No.
Arthur?
Uh, mostly.
Leslie?
Yes, I think it should be specific to the community.
Eric?
Mostly.
Okay, Marnie?
Yes, specific to the, the council member. Yes.
All right, a couple more here. Do you believe there should be a, a residential parking permit system instituted in the city? Uh, or just in this district, but I, I would assume not just in one district. Do you think uh, the city should explore a residential uh parking permit system? Arthur?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Marnie?
Yes.
And Alita?
Yes.
Okay, last two. There's obviously a mayoral election happening at the same time as this election. Uh, in, as of today, here in the, the middle, towards the end of April. Who are you planning to vote for in the Democratic primary for mayor? Eric?
Ben, I'm undecided.
Undecided voter. Marnie?
Undecided.
Oh, we're all going to cop out today. Alita?
Well, it's ranked choice, so I'll give you my top three.
Great, go ahead.
Our Catherine Garcia, Diane Morales and Andrew Yang.
All right, Arthur?
Um, Maya Wiley, Diane Morales and Eric Adams.
In that order?
Yes.
Okay, Leslie?
Uh, I'm undecided, but I'm going with a woman. I'm going to break the glass ceiling. It's going to be one of the three women.
Okay, last one. Uh, so we've, it's just been alluded to. There's ranked choice voting at play. I mentioned that in the introduction. So assuming that you're going to rank yourself number one in this race, who in this race are you ranking number two? Alita?
Uh, where um, that's a hard one because everyone here is so wonderful. And I would like to say though, I would like to hire Arthur as my general counsel, so.
Okay, you guys can discuss that offline. Arthur?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, but it's going to be someone whose political work has been as a volunteer, not as a paid government person and a parent.
Okay, Leslie?
Uh, I'm going to go with the woman theme, Ben. It's going to be either, it's going to be Alita and Marnie are going on my rankings.
All right, Eric?
I am voting for Alita as my number two. I worked with her for many years and um, she's a friend and I have so much respect for her and she's going to be my number two.
All right, and Marnie?
So two, two uh prongs, one for women, uh, either Leslie or Alita, and the second, a political outsider failing.
Okay, yes, and I'm asking about your number two, but of course you can rank up to five, so there's lots of options there. I didn't ask you about three, four and five, but folks gave us some thoughts. All right, let's go to closing statements here, everybody. One minute closing statements to bring us to the end of our time together. If you're getting up against that one minute, I'll say a gentle thank you to, to ask you to wrap up. We are going to start with uh Eric and move along in the same order we've been going. So Eric, you have one minute to uh give a final thought to voters watching on why they should vote for you in June. Go ahead.
And thank you for a great debate. I want to thank my fellow candidates. And um, our campaign here in the council is a grassroots movement. We have over eight hundred eighty people have donated. We're not taking a dime from real estate developers or lobbyists. We have nearly five thousand petition signatures. We have the support of hundreds of community members from around the district. Jerry Nadler, labor unions and so many others of, are supporting our campaign. And they're supporting me because they know me and they know that I'm ready to lead on day one. I'm ready to hit the ground running. And I believe that with experienced leadership, if we make the right decisions and come together and make the structural changes that we need to make, the best days in our city are ahead of us. But only if we come together and make the right decisions. I really want to thank you for having me today. And for folks watching, go to ericbotcher.com to learn more about me and the plans that I've put out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marnie?
Okay, uh, I, I am running because I don't want a city where only developers, hedge fund managers and big tech executives can live. I want a city that can hang on to and expand its diversity, culture and public assets. City council has prioritized luxury development over deeply affordable housing and a social safety net, and that's why we're in crisis. But we need leaders who will take our city's recovery seriously and will pass policies of real economic relief, like the Small Business Job Survival Act for small businesses and canceling the rent for tenants. We also need leaders that are independent and will take the unilateral power away from the mayor, Revny and the EDC and give it back to the community. I believe that communities need the final sane land decisions, and if I'm elected, that will be a priority on day one. But I also believe we need to be kind and take care of our homeless neighbors and people in crisis. Cre- uh, creating a council office responsive to expanding the social safety net for the district will also be a top concern. Go to my website, marnifercitycouncil.com and thank you and thank everybody.
Thank you. And Alita?
So as a person, the only one here who was born and raised in this district, I have seen quite an evolution happen over forty years. It's been very low, it's been very high. And right now, we're in a serious predicament and it can go either way. And I think that we need to get back to community-led conversations about how we're going to see our neighborhoods develop. And it's really important to me that we listen to the people. I want to be a council person who's a voice for our people. And I want to see the city embrace our cultural diversity. We found out that really it's lacking. There's in incredible systemic racism and classism happening right now. And I want a better place for my son to grow up, where he'll be respected and can thrive and have a competitive education and maybe start a business and feel like this can be his home for as long as he wants it to be. And I want that for everyone's kids. So please go to alitalafarg.com if you want to find out more about our race and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Arthur, over to you.
I think I'm the only candidate in this race who can, who doesn't just say, this is what I'm gonna do. Because for forty-two years in this community, I have gotten a lot of things accomplished. Just look at the last month where I was able to go to court and restore service on the F and the C line, where I stood with Senator Schumer and uh celebrated a deal with the MTA to get elevators for disabled people on the uh, on the Fourteenth Street corridor, where I sued the MTA and got station agents restored to the booths in the subways. I'm the one who sued and then worked with fellow parents to get Pier Forty, turn it into the most magnificent ball field in, in Manhattan. Uh, I've been doer and I've done it as a volunteer. Uh, I'm also a lifelong, I have a lifelong commitment to, to fighting systemic racism, which is why I was the first candidate endorsed by Black Lives Matter here in New York and by the Black Leadership Action Coalition and by many uh, many leaders of color in the city. I am somebody who is fierce. Yesterday, we were asked in another debate to give one word to describe ourselves. I am also persistent. Uh, so I think, and go to arthurforNYC.com to read all of my platform.
All right, very good. Leslie, you get the final word uh before I, I get the real final word.
I'm wrapping it up.
Final word among candidates. Go ahead.
Uh, so I'm running as a mother, a wife, a daughter, to small business owners, a granddaughter to hardworking immigrants, a reporter, an organizer and a long-term resident. I'm running because I love my community. I love my neighbors. And I didn't imagine I would ever seek public office, but when COVID came along, I saw the collective failure of government at every level to take care of all these people who make up my neighborhood, the small business owners, the educators, the NYCHA residents, the elderly, the women who have had to leave the workforce because they've had to take care of a child or an older relative during COVID. So I believe this tragedy really exposed the cracks that already existed in the system. And we've had years of leadership who regardless of whether they said the right things in public, in private, lacked the political will to do the hard work to fix it. And I am running to change that. Our community is resilient and I want to turn ideas into action. So the road of COVID recovery, it will be tough, but this is also really a remarkable opportunity for us to press the restart button. Uh, and I promise I'll get things done. And by the way, this year is ranked choice voting. So if you go with someone else as your first choice, please consider me your second choice. Uh, and my website, since everyone's putting out their website, it's uh, leslifor, F-O-R-N-Y-C dot com.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. You've heard from six Democrats running for New York City Council in Manhattan's District Three. I thank you all. District Three. I thank you all for sharing your thoughts and your vision and your stances. And thank you for watching Represent NYC election coverage. I hope this debate was helpful to you as you make your choices. When it's time to vote, the June primaries are fast approaching and remember, they will feature ranked choice voting, where you can rank up to five candidates in order of preference. Key decisions are coming up for all of us and the future of the city. Again, I hope this and other debates and interviews are helpful to you. I'm Ben Max. See you next time.